I apply to Legion, see the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2017. We did not have an executive session tonight, so I will not be announcing our executive session, as I usually do when we start out a meeting. And the first order of business on our agenda tonight is a very happy occasion. We will be honoring our citizen and standout, Marty Costello. So Commissioner Curley and I are going to come down to the podium with our manager, Bob Zinkowski, and we're going to present this honor. So, in case you didn't know, this year Marty Costello was awarded the 2017 Freedom Medal Award by the Delaware County Veterans Memorial. And he has displayed that medal, and it will be displayed in this township in his honor. And we also, as a township, would like to honor him with a certificate and recognition tonight for all that he has done for our township, for the example he has set as a citizen activist in this township, and for the impact that he has had on every generation in this township, from those of us who are up there in years, and all the way down into the middle school where he was very active with some programming in the last couple of years. So, it has been an honor and a privilege on my part to work with Marty for many years. Every single resident of this township is better for having Marty as one of our residents and one of our participants in our community. And I'm going to go ahead and read this, so that you can all see the certificate and the recognition that we are giving to Mr. Costello. "The Radnor Township Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Martin Costello, a United States Navy veteran, for his service and dedication to Radnor Township and the men and women of Radnor Township who served in the Armed Forces of the United States. Furthermore, we would like to congratulate Mr. Costello on his selection as a recipient of the 2017 Freedom Medal Award presented by the Delaware County Veterans Memorial, and for donating that medal to be displayed for all the citizens of the township to see, and behold, as witness that Marty reminds us every day of the enduring qualities that make our veterans from Radnor Township exceptional, and what truly makes the United States of America great." So congratulations. If I know Marty, Marty has a few words to say.
Before I present the medal to Elaine, eight years ago, Elaine was brand-new on the Board of Commissioners, and as the commander of Bateman Gallagher 668, we were redoing the war memorial. And we were asking permission to do this and do that, even though we had all our ducks lined up. And she looked at me, and she goes, "Thank you, Mr. Costello, for all the work that you're doing." And I looked at this beautiful woman, and I said, "It's not work. These men and women are our heroes. There's no work involved." And I remember that moment in time. And all through the years, one of the first pictures, if not the first picture on the back wall, Elaine showed up at Radnor High School, and I convinced the principals of three schools, Radnor High School, Archbishop Carroll, and St. Catherine's, to show up at Radnor High School for a picture, to promote the Wall of Honor that we were still pushing. So we had three schools holding up poster boards of the 118 war dead, which St. Catherine's of Siena did the research on. And it was quite extraordinary. It had never been done before, but I presented that to Elaine, and that was the first picture on the back wall. The second picture was basically the same. We did a research of the nine Vietnam War dead, Larry Marshall, and the other guys. But that was the second picture that was put up. And now, this is no longer the commissioner's room, it's the people's room. And that's, when I see the plaques and the awards, that's what I think of. We, the people. One of my heroes, who received this award a few years ago, wrote to me today, "You must love these people a whole lot to give this medal to them." Well, that's true. I do. I do love the men that we've been honored with these casket flag ceremonies. Maybe some of you don't know what that is. It's when we get the family members of a veteran who has died, who came back and helped rebuild this town. We fly the five-by-nine-and-a-half flag on our flagpole, right here in Wayne, right on South Wayne Avenue. And we honor that veteran. We did 27 this year, and there's a couple... I didn't do that. And, you know, we make up these programs, and we tell the life stories of what they did when they came back, but also what they did when they were in the military. The last ones we did were the DeMecantoneos, the Balones, and the Calverices. Nine. Now, how did that happen? Well, we were just gonna do the DeMecantoneos, and then we found out that Ray Balone was in Lou's and Bob's father's outfit, and he was killed. So, all right, we'll do him. Then we find out that John Calverice, and this is hard to believe, all these guys played football together at Radnor High School, got thrown in a prisoner-of-war camp with Emilio Balone. And the Allies were coming, so the Germans had to move the POW camp. And Emilio Balone couldn't walk because his feet were frozen. So John Calverice, who played football with him, carried him for five days on his back, from one prisoner-of-war camp to the other. Now, you know, you say, "I knew these people my whole life. They never talked about these things." We have these heroes walking among us, and we don't know it, because they don't talk about what they did. Number one, it hurts too much. My dad never told me anything. And number two, they're humble. Humility, the greatest of all virtues. Trust me on that one. It really is. And so, I knew all this was gonna happen. We have the ceremony, and here I find out that the Balones, the DeMecantoneos, and the Calverices, the children and the sisters, have never met each other. They met each other at our war memorial less than a month ago, and what a reunion that was. The Balones are coming up to the Calverice, Vince, I believe his name is, and said, "If it wasn't for your brother, we wouldn't be here today." So we have to continue to tell these stories, because if we don't tell these stories, we don't have these ceremonies, we don't talk to these veterans, their stories are gonna end. So, without further ado, I'm gonna now present this medal, and I'm gonna have Commissioner Schaefer read it, because she has a lot nicer voice than me. And Commissioner?
Could you please read that to the people of Radnor Township?
It reads, "This medal is proudly presented to the men and women of Radnor Township who served in the Armed Forces of the United States. Thank you for protecting our freedoms, rights, and liberties. December 18th, 2017. Marty Costello, U.S. Navy veteran." Do you want me to hang that on the wall?
Yes.
Let's go ahead.
Could I have the other veterans in the audience here? Mr. Quinlan? John? 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 We have...
Don?
Our new...
Treasurer.
Our new tax treasurer is a veteran also, and her husband. John? Yes? And then, of course, Mr. Jim. How you doing, sir?
He's a past Commander Quinlan, is a Korean War veteran, and he's one of my heroes. What he did over there in that frozen rock was unbelievable.
Thank you, Commander.
All right, we'll get some pictures.
Vanity.
About humility, you said?
Yes.
And then, in honor of all of the, and in recognition of all of the veterans and all of the service up here right now, we're going to hang this front and center in the back, or back and center in the back of our room, and I'd like to ask you to do that honor.
Thank you. You gonna join me?
Sure. is, and he's not aware of this, so our township manager was recently honored by the International City Management Association, the ICMA, which is the national group for all municipal managers, for 25 years of service in local government. And we were lucky enough here in Radnor to have him for seven and a half of those 25 years. But Mr. Zinkowski has been serving in local government, in management, for 25 years, and he received this award in October, and we are so proud to honor it, to honor him and recognize his service, and thank him for spending seven and a half of those years with us.
This, you know, I'm honored for this, but really, I don't deserve any of the credits. All the staff, the commissioners, I'm just here, it's really all the staff and the community that I've worked for, all the boards and commissions. My job's easy, they're the ones that do all the work, and our staff, the hard work. I'm just the one that people point to, is the lead person, but it's really all the staff. So really, this is on behalf of the staff, of all the people I've worked for, for all those years. This is an honor, and again, this is a huge surprise, so thank you very much. But again, it's all the staff, and I thank the commissioners, the honor to be able to do this every day here in such a great community. So, thank you all very much.
All right, next, we will go ahead and have a motion to pass our consent agenda, which is a time where we pass many items at once that don't normally merit discussion or debate. However, we offer the opportunity to the board or the community to pull any of these items out, if you would like discussion. At this point, is there anyone on the board or in the public who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing no one, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes unanimously, six to nothing. Next, we are going to recognize outgoing treasurer and commissioners.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask our treasurer, Mr. John Osborne, if you'd like to step forward. John?
When I first started here, John was one of the people that I got a good history lesson from, on the community, and some of the past history here. And John welcomed me with open arms here, and was a good mentor here for me, and all throughout the years here, the seven and a half years of being here, John was a good reference of history. John also, too, was a good reminder also of the past, and also was one that kept myself and Bill and everyone else on our toes here, in his role as treasurer, which is something that we've always held John in the greatest of respect, and the job that he has done. And I appreciate everything, John, that you have done over the years, and the service that you've given to this community, because it's not an easy job to do. There's a lot of time and responsibility that you hold. And John, you've done a very nice job with that, so...
It wasn't as difficult under your regime as what I had before.
But I do want to thank you, John, for everything that you have done, and thank you for welcoming me and making the transition very, very nice here.
Thanks, Bob.
So thank you, Phil.
Sure. Bill?
Mr. Osborne, just real quickly, I would echo everything that the manager said in terms of being an excellent mentor. I enjoyed getting to know you and working side-by-side with you, tackling some pretty interesting things when we first got here. I've always found you to be very honest and direct, and very much appreciated that, especially in dealing with some of the more sticky situations that we were dealing with. Your candor was always very much appreciated. And anytime you get to work with someone who spent basically two careers serving the public, you learn to respect those people very much. And so I've utmost respect for you. I wish you nothing but the best.
Well, thanks for the kind words.
And thank you for, thank you to your family for letting us spend some time with you.
Good.
So thank you very much. And then, last but not least, Amy Lacy.
Oh, my. Hey, Amy.
Hello. So I've had the pleasure of working with you for 13 years. I have truly enjoyed it, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. I would like to thank you for your service, not just to me, to our finance department, but your complete and utter dedication to the township residents.
Well, thank you very much. That's very kind. Well, I have a few words to say as now the time...
Not so fast, though, John, if it's all right.
At this time, I'd like to ask the commissioners.
So, John, I just want to say, for me, you preceded me by a few years in this. Very turbulent time, very tough time. On the campaign trail, I heard lots of positive things about the great job you were doing. You were really a leader for us at that time. Then, when I stepped in, you helped me, you transitioned, helped transition us. You were always very clear, very strong, and it was very, very helpful for me in particular as commissioner. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Don.
And I would like to thank you for your service, your dedication, and for getting us through a very difficult time in this township with dignity and grace, and we are all very appreciative of everything that you've given to this township.
Thank you, Elaine.
And I would echo what everyone said, and your record of service to the country, to the public, to the township is just exemplary. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, best, we share one thing in common, and that's the Department of the Navy, your Marine Corps. I was regular Navy. But best of luck to you. I'm sure you'll have another career. You had Marine Corps. Well, let's just recite them.
I have work orders.
You had the FBI, Marine Corps, Radnor Township, and I'll leave it up to the judge to decide what's next.
Thank you, Burke.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
John, we've had some great conversations over the years. Gonna miss that. Best of luck, and I hope the judge doesn't drive you too hard.
Thank you, John. Well, now, oh, here's some more.
Not so fast. Not getting off the hook that easy. So, what I'd like to do is read this for you and for the audience. "Radnor Township's award of appreciation is hereby granted to John E. Osborne in recognition for your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community by serving as the Radnor Township treasurer from July of 2004 through December of 2017. Please know that the citizens, commissioners, and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding performance and lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line. Awarded December 18th, 2017, with great sincerity."
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
And now, it's all yours.
Good evening, Madden Chairperson, members of the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township, Mr. Zinkowski and your staff, and particularly the residents of Radnor Township. You have all been part of the service I have been able to provide as treasurer. Special thanks are owed and gratefully given to Amy Lacy, whose skills and talents, as a member of the finance department, are key support to the treasurer as well. I congratulate the incoming treasurer, Catherine Gartland, who was recently elected, the incoming Catherine was elected with bipartisan support. She has been working daily in making this a seamless transition to being the treasurer. Thanks as well to my wife, Ann, my daughter Sarah Armstrong, and the Armstrong family for their encouragement and support throughout the years in office. Finally, to the people of Radnor Township, thank you for allowing me to serve as your treasurer for nearly, for 13 years. It has been my great honor and true pleasure. Thank you.
Don's another one that, when I started here, Don had offered a lot of support and guidance in my time that has been here. Don has been one that has given a lot of advice and direction and guidance to me. There has been times we have agreed on many things, there's been a lot of times that we have not agreed on things, and I'm one that the times we don't agree on things is the time that you learn. And I know I'm kinda weird in a way, because when you don't agree on things, that's the time in which you get better. And I'm a big believer on when you don't agree, and you see things maybe a little bit differently, it's a great opportunity to learn and get better. Don cares greatly for his ward. Don is very involved and has been very wired to his residents in meeting with his residents, talking with his residents. His ward is one in which he has earned their respect, and it's not given, but it's been earned. And Don works extremely hard for his residents. He emails on a regular basis his concern for his residents. He follows up with his residents, which is one in 25 years, which actually, 27 years of public service. In 25 years, Don is one of those few commissioners that follows up, that is involved and deeply cares about his community. And that's something that speaks volumes of the person that Don is and the character that he has brought to his ward, and it's something that he can leave as a legacy here in Radnor Township, and something he can be very proud of. And I've seen a lot of elected officials come and go, and Don ranks in the very, very top percent, top 2% of those. So, Don, I mean, you really, you've done a tremendous job. He's worked hard for that, and he's earned the respect, not only of the community, but also of the staff. And again, Don, I can't thank you enough for all that you've done for me, and what you've helped teach me, and what we've learned here as a community. So, thank you so much for all of that.
The Department Heads have some things to say.
Commissioner Curley, his background, I don't know that everybody knows his professional background, but it's quite impressive. And his methodology and thought process, when it came to the many projects that go before the board, has been invaluable, and I very much appreciate his support with staff on these projects, and thank him for his service.
Thank you, sir.
On behalf of Public Works, all the guys at the garage, we thank Commissioner Curley for all his hard work and support.
Commissioner, on behalf of the Community Development Department, thank you for your persistence with all the ordinances that we've worked on on my tenure, and appreciate your support.
One of the things Mr. Zinkowski said that I'll agree with 100% is Don Curley really did care about the residents in his ward. I could vouch for that. He's also extremely intelligent. Any meetings we ever had, he would ask me some very tough questions, but at the end of the day, he would say to me, "Bill, if you need this for your department to make it a better department, better for the Radnor residents, then you have my support." And also, luckily for me, he also has a sense of humor, so I thank you for that.
Commissioner, thank you on behalf of the Finance Department for your service. I know a lot of the familiar faces in this room understand just how much work goes into being a commissioner, in Radnor Township especially. Hopefully, there's some folks that maybe watch this either now or at some point in the future, understand that the amount of work that goes into this is immense, and it's something we should all be very thankful for as residents, as voters and taxpayers. So, I really appreciate it. Personally, I appreciate how you would challenge me individually and me as a department head of the Finance Department. You're always fair, and I always appreciated that, similar to Mr. Osborne. I always knew exactly where you were coming from. In times where there were disagreements, Don, you always did a really good job in making sure that you recognized staff and the job that staff does for the community, and that was always very much appreciated. So, best of luck. Enjoy your free time.
Commissioner, I want to take an opportunity on behalf of the Recreation Department to say thank you for all the support that you've given us. I know, Don, you've come out to many of our community events and supported us. A lot of events came to fruition, of course, during your tenure, and you came out and supported a lot of those, and had always been just great to work with, very supportive of the things that we've done as a department, and for everything that you've given to all the residents throughout Radnor Township. Makes me wish I was a resident, of course, of Radnor Township, for all the leadership that you've given. So on behalf of our department, I want to say thank you.
Don also sings, too, so we don't know if there's another budding career that comes after this, too. And he does play an instrument, so that could be coming, too. Commissioners?
Yeah, Don, you know, I've known Don since, I think, 2011, I think, and from, aside from thanking you for all your hard work for the township and your residents, from my perspective, being a young guy wanting to get involved in local government, I reached out to you, and, you know, you gave me a lot of your time in not only getting to understand how to be an appointed member of the township, how to be a productive appointed member of the township, but also how to get involved in an elected capacity, as I wanted to do, and also, once elected, in governing, and how to govern correctly, and how to be fair, and see everything in the light of the best interest of the township. So, if you haven't seen this article, and both Don and Elaine wrote this in the Wayne Living Magazine, "Radnor Life and Style," it really is really what they were about, which, you know, when I think back to both of them, you know, there was compromise, but there was effectiveness there. So, from my perspective, Don, you really taught me a lot about how to be involved in local government. You gave me a ton of your time to work on it, and, you know, I hope I can do half the job you did. Thank you.
Well, Don, you and I have been in this together all eight years, and it has really been a pleasure and privilege to work with you. I realize, looking back at it, you know, for my eight years here, I was in the majority party, and it, you know, that comes with, makes it a little easier to get the things that you really care about through and done. And in thinking about your experience, you know, you were on, in the minority for eight years, and I understand that must have at times been frustrating. But instead of, you know, lashing out or handling that without grace, you really were dignified... know, lashing out or handling that without grace, you really were dignified and worked hard to make coalitions to get what you wanted done, done, and succeeded at that. You gained the respect of everyone on this board, and you really respected the institution and your colleagues and democracy and sort of putting your side out there, and sometimes that took the day and sometimes it didn't, and respecting the result, and I really thank you for that, and I hope that I can model my future career, if it ever, if there is one, on that type of behavior, because it's really admirable. So, thanks.
Well, Don, you and I started about the same time, I think I got a two-week head start, and I really appreciate the fact that you and I have met on a frequent basis to discuss these issues and learn about them together, and I'm still going to be calling you so we can get together for coffee because you're my sounding board and my planning expert that I depend on. Thanks.
So, I'm actually, from everything I've heard about you, it's upsetting that you're leaving, just as this, as I got seated here, but my perspective, from what my brother told me and my mother, who happened to spend a week with you in the Adirondacks, they said just wonderful things, and I know John said wonderful things, so, and just from how I've seen you act and handle yourself and rise above a lot of nonsense, thank you very much for everything you've done, and unfortunately, I wish I would have been able to learn from you, so, thank you.
Well, what I want everybody to know about Don is his leadership, his absolutely intense approach to all the issues that our board grapples with from January to December. He's so studious in his approach, he, notwithstanding that, he's flexible and cooperative, and we got along fine on most issues. Stormwater, you were helped most of the time, certainly on sidewalks, we did some good things together, but I think if there was any, the main quality about Don is his intense understanding, his broad understanding of our issues, and you just listen to some of the debates we had on our budget, and you can understand then how deep he goes into the spreadsheets and the balance sheets and all the backup information. I learned a lot from him, and I just want the public to understand, we're losing a good, a good public servant. So, Don, best of luck to you.
Okay, thank you, does this work? All right, so for me, this is the end of fourteen consecutive years, eight as Commissioner and six as Planning Commissioner, and honestly, it's the only time that I don't know what to say, you know, so, you know, I just love the microphone, I could talk all day, and I really didn't know what to say, so what I came down to, very fitting, and, you know, very, thank you for the kind words of my peers, but essentially, the one word that describes it for me, "I feel humble." And, you know, why do I feel humble? Well, I feel humble because I have to sort of admit a little, you know, for me, this was a, there was, this was something I wanted to do. I've been known to enjoy a good textbook from time to time, and I'm a bit of an introvert, so this is not an occupation that lends itself to those two attributes, and what this process did is helped me grow as an individual. All the things that we talked about, the staff, we all worked together, we proved that you can be strong-willed and believe in things, and at the end of the day, still get along, which is very valuable. Persuasiveness is the thing we are losing most in politics. Elections are great, but in between elections, we need persuasiveness, and so I have always tried to do that. I have great respect for all of you here, both at the staff and on my peer level, because you allowed me to do that with you, so thank you very much. So, a couple of people that I have to thank, you know, first, thank the staff and my peers for what I just identified. Then I have to thank my wife, this is a huge burden on your time, I loved it, you know, I wasn't proud, I was, I just totally enjoyed it, it was crazy, but I loved it. It was hard on my wife, we had three young kids at the time, now we have three kids, you know, grade school, middle, middle school age, very hard on my wife, so special thanks to my wife, and then obviously, the great thanks have to go out to the people of the Sixth Ward, they helped me with this experience, it was a wonderful experience, so to each of you in the Sixth Ward, thank you very much for that opportunity.
Don, we have a plaque here for you, that's Radnor Township's Award of Appreciation is hereby granted to Donald D. Curly in recognition of your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community by serving on the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, January 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2017. Please know that the citizens, Commissioners and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding performance and lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line, awarded December 18th, 2017. Congratulations, Don. We have one more. Elaine?
Again, Elaine, when I started here, same thing, Elaine was able to give me some tremendous guidance in history and a tremendous learning curve to Radnor Township, to the people and citizens of Radnor, to the business community, the climate of the community, coming off the history too, as well as both from John and from Don and the other Commissioners. Elaine always carried herself in a very professional manner, one in which was extremely representative of Radnor Township, one that lent itself to how the staff should carry themselves, how we should all be always proud of Radnor Township, of our heritage, of our history, but also of our future. And again, Elaine, you are one that I hold in very high regard, is one of the top elected officials, one that is willing to take a lot of heat, but also continue to shrug off that and continue to do a tremendous job, and always put the community first and never your personal agenda, and that speaks volumes for someone who always is, it's community first and all other objectives secondary, and again, that speaks volumes of what an elected representative should be, and I think you've exemplified of what that is and have always conducted yourself and carried yourself in that way, and I know that's something that I've always truly appreciated, what you've taught, taught me, and the lessons and those, basically, a lot will always stay with me, and I think I'll always remember those lessons, and I know that we, again, we've never, we haven't agreed always on things, we've always had those fun conversations, but again, they've been in the best interest of Radnor Township, and to me, again, that's what this whole type of government is about, and about doing what's best for Radnor Township, and that's the way it should be. And again, leading the opportunities for change here of what Radnor needed, putting things in place that had to be put in place to assure things did not occur again, that was one of the things that you were most involved with, along with Don, John, and other Commissioners, and again, I respect a lot of that and making those tough decisions and the courage to be able to do that, so thank you, Elaine, for all of that.
On behalf of Public Works, we'd like to thank Commissioner Schaefer for all her hard work and support, it's been a pleasure and an honor.
Commissioner Schaefer's work for open space, trails, and parks is going to be enjoyed by Radnor residents for generations to come, there's no doubt, and her support of staff has always been very, very greatly appreciated.
Commissioner, on behalf of Community Development Department, appreciate all your support for the department and for staff, thank you.
If I could just take a quick ten seconds, getting back to Don Curly, I want to tell you a ten-second story, it'll tell you everything you need to know about the man. We had a tragedy about three or four years ago where there was a murder-suicide, he had three young children homeless, he called me up that night, and he said that him and his wife were willing to take those children in, so that's all you need to know about the man. And Marty, one of the things I appreciate you do, because my dad and your dad both served in the U.S. Navy in World War II, you always salute that flag when you come in the room, and I thank you for that. Elaine is one of the original of the seven Commissioners that gave me a chance and let me come out and work in this great downtown in Radnor. The other two remaining are Don Curly and John Nagel. Elaine is the epitome of what I call class and professionalism, she handles everything with grace and just expertise and just, you're such a professional, and it's something my mother always told me, you're lucky when you meet people or work with people to make you want to be a better person, and I'll always appreciate you for that, and you're just a wonderful person, and I think a lot of people could learn from the way you conduct yourself, so thank you.
So, the one word that I had identified that I think of when I think of you, Elaine, is professionalism. Bill just stole that from me, but it is so true. I remember one of the first meetings I was in after I was fortunate enough to be appointed by the board and the manager, it was a topic that was hotly debated at the time, dealing with a certain parcel of land here in Radnor, and the meeting got a little intense, and through the whole thing, you remained calm, level-headed, and very professional, and it was something, I don't even remember exactly what was discussed in the meeting anymore, but I remember that, that from you, and it's something that we've all witnessed over the last eight years from you on a consistent basis, no matter what was going on, you've always been very professional and very honest, and I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Don't call me professional. I'm not going to sound redundant, but what I do want to say is that as a woman looking up to you, with such profound grace and such profound just poise here, representing everyone and representing folks on behalf of the township, I want to thank you as a woman, looking up to you is something that has been very important to me, I think I've learned a lot from you over the years, I appreciate your support in everything that you've gone, I know that you've done. Steve mentioned the trails and parks, the leadership that you've given in that area has been significant, I know it's something that will touch the lives of folks throughout the township for a long, long time, and on behalf of our department, Recreation, you've always supported the things that we've done, you've come out to our events, you've spoken at our events, and you've definitely left a resonating impact with me, so thank you very much, Elaine.
Elaine, if you can.
Bob, can we, Commissioner? Yeah, so, it's a combination of fitting and a little ironic that one of the most, one of the most important things, best ways to describe you is left to me, all great, wonderful things that people said about you, but what they seemed to leave out was just how tough you are. So, what you were over an eight-year period is your adversaries are the smartest, toughest people in Radnor, and you handled them in that dignified manner that everyone spoke about, so all those things are wonderful, but augment it with you're also very, very tough, and I think you and your family should be proud of just how tough you are.
Well, I remember when, when I got elected back in 2015, I think it was within a day or two, and Elaine called me up and invited me out to coffee, and gave me a good bit of her time in, you know, explaining her experience on the board and giving me some insight into what she does, and I really appreciated that, that made me feel very welcome to the board, and that meant a lot to me. In sitting on the board and being a newer Commissioner, you know, I always kind of found myself looking to Don and Elaine as we were making our way through these proceedings, and especially on tough issues, because that, they seem to be the drivers for what would eventually get done, and it was generally a compromise somewhere, so, you know, that's something I've learned a lot from, and something that really takes a lot to be able to do on some of the things that we've dealt with here, and I completely agree with Tammy, I think anybody who wants to get involved in local government, especially if you're a woman, I think that Elaine's a fantastic role model for anybody who wants to get involved in local government, and how to handle yourself and how to be effective, so, thank you, Elaine, for your service.
So, Don, Elaine, and I all came on the board about the same time, and the, to say that the township was in chaos would probably be an understatement. We all had the privilege of hiring Bill, he mentioned that, and that even was not without significant challenge, not because of Bill, but external, external influences. Elaine and I have worked together for over twenty years, not just the eight years on this board, but before that, and I look forward to you continuing to help us on some of the projects that we started while you were on the board. Thanks a lot.
Just once again, you know, with you and Don leaving, like, you two were the two people that, you know, when I watch you, how you handle yourself, it's that you both, you two, especially Elaine, you handle yourself with poise, that is a word that everyone uses, because that, that's exactly what you do, so, I only, you know, when I look at how you handle yourself, where it's, you're soft-spoken, but you're able to get your point across, you're able to do it fair, that's something that I will strive to be as I go through this, so thank you.
Everything they've been saying about you is true. I want to direct the discussion a little bit to the issues, if I can. I want the public to know the issues that Elaine has bored in on in the last eight years and how important they are to the quality of life we have in Radnor. I worked with her on most of these, I, she led, I followed, but here they are. When, when I joined the board in 2012, we had some financial problems, and Sarah Armstrong is in the audience, she worked on a study committee that highlighted what those problems were. We had unfunded liabilities in our pension program and in our, what's called other post-employment benefit programs, which are life insurance and healthcare, and with Elaine's leadership and the support of Bill White and Bob Zinkowski, we got our hands around that and came up with policies that now has this township moving to solve those, they're long-term problems, they're long-term liabilities, they can't be solved tomorrow, but we're moving in that direction, and Elaine's leadership was there. We've had six straight surpluses, maybe it's seven straight surpluses on our budget. We maintain our rating with Moody's at A, double A1, we should be all the way at the top, triple A, except that we rely on income from our real, I'm sorry, from our business privilege tax, and that can fluctuate according to how the economy is doing, so Moody's looks at, we have a great property tax base, but we don't have that, enough income there, but working together with all the Commissioners, Elaine has done things like making sure we have those surpluses and making our Moody's rating stay where it is. Perhaps the most important thing that she led on was the purchase of the Ardrossan property in the southwest corner of the township, seventy-plus acres, and we're going to have that forever, thanks, thanks to her leadership. Again, I was a follower, she was the leader. Did I mention tax increases? How many years have you been chair? Four out of your eight, six out of your eight? In any event, on the, for the six years I've been on the board, we've had only one tax increase, so five out of the six years, no tax increases. Right next to Ardrossan, her leadership on open space and trails. When the trail system is finished, we're going to be the envy of every community in this entire country, let alone, not just Delaware County and Montgomery County. And then finally, what she and I worked together on was the stormwater program and enacting a stormwater fee to help us solve our flooding problems, and again, I won't go into the details of why that's so important, but on her chairing of meetings, equanimity is the word, coolness under pressure. She takes a lot of heat and has never reacted negatively, has never lost her control, lost her temper, but that's, she exemplifies respectfulness in her dealings with, with the public, so we're going to miss you, Elaine, and best of luck.
Radnor Township's award of appreciation is hereby granted to Elaine P. Schaefer in recognition of your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community by serving on the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners January 1, 2010 through December 31, 2017. Please know that the citizens, commissioners, and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding performance and lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line awarded December 18, 2017. Congratulations, Elaine.
Elaine, I just want to let you know that the boss wouldn't let me do it. I wanted to present this a different way. I wanted to drive to your house in a police car and then pop open the trunk and do what we call a plaque-posel, but we just, the boss frowned upon it, and he wouldn't let me do it, so.
All right. Well, I have a present parting gift for the township as well, which I would like to present to you. For those of you who follow the Ardrossan story for the last 10 years of that saga, David Nelson Wren was working on a book throughout the entire time, and it finally got published this fall. So, I bought a copy for the township to keep on one of our coffee tables out there, and I encourage you all to look at it, because it's really a beautiful rendition of the history and of the whole region, really, and an era gone by. I do have a few things I'd like to say. In parting, I'm going to take my full five minutes up here, too, and I'm going to do it in three segments. It's the staff, the board, and then the residents. And staff, first and foremost, because I've been commissioner for eight years, so in parting, you know, I've been on the inside for eight years, and I've gotten to see sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly, and how this township actually works. And I want to share that, you know, from the inside, this township, these, you residents should be extraordinarily grateful and feel so fortunate at how well-run our township is. It is really so professional, so, and believe me, I know this, I, in my job, deal with municipalities all over this region, and the way this township is run is the envy of all townships. It's professional, it's run with the aim of keeping services high and always, always, always keeping taxes low. That is the refrain, and we're really lucky to have that, by a staff that really cares. The management staff, Bob Zinkowski, Bill White, and Bill Colarulo, really second to none in the time, the energy, and the love they give this township, and the way they are always trying to improve things, but always with keeping the cost down so the taxpayers will not have a burden. I mean, and that has taken us all kinds of places of not agreeing, because, you know, the board is often presented with ideas to cut costs that are not palatable to the residents, but they're always coming, these ideas, you know, "Let's sell this off, let's put towers here, let's do this." You know, we're always getting these ideas, which is what you want from your staff. I also want to shout out to John Rice, our solicitor, who also joined us about seven, seven and a half years ago, who sort of came from nowhere. He was not connected to anyone. He wasn't from Delaware County, nobody really knew him, which was really the perfect fit for us. And he has given us unbiased, untainted, just great advice for seven and a half years, not always telling us what we want to hear, which is the danger sometimes with township solicitors. We get the answer, the right answer, not necessarily what we want to hear, and he has done it.
Elaine, eight years.
Eight years.
Nine months. Thirteen days.
But, and honestly, so unbiased, to this day, I do not know what political party John Rice is, and we have never had a political conversation, a partisan conversation. So, that is what you want in a solicitor. So, thank you. And he's done it, taking a lot of heat, unnecessary heat from people that he's really handled with grace, so thank you. And the rest of our staff, and the rest of our departments, I mean, Tammy has taken the Recreation Department to another stratosphere from what it was seven, eight years ago. And the offerings and what our residents enjoy from that department, it's astonishing. Our whole, our Engineering and our Community Development Department, despite, you know, an uptick in development, they handle it with aplomb, and, you know, Steve, we've always asked, Norsini, we've always asked to be all things to all people, and he's always risen to the occasion and done that. And Kevin has been serving this community while serving the country and took us through a five-year nightmare of a quagmire of the PLO and did it without complaining once and ended up with a great product. And Public Works, I mean, I can't say enough about Public Works. Our Public Works employees are completely invested in producing the top-quality services, and they do it day after day. It's Steve McNellis and Mark Dominic, Leah McVeigh and Paul Basic, even though he's not, no longer working for the township, really. I just, I want to tell you that from the inside, I am so proud that they are, that that is our staff, and that is what we are paying for. When you write that check every year for township services, it is worth every penny. Even if you can't deduct it anymore, it is still worth every penny. So, rest assured, you are getting, and you know what? I'm hearing in my head the voice of our ex-beloved John Deflamines, our school, our ex-superintendent, who used to always say, "The biggest room in any house is the room for improvement." And that is true in this house, too, but I can tell you that this staff is always working in that room for improving, and I can't say enough about them. The board, it has really been a delight to work on this board. I have loved governing, and I understand that I've had the unrealistic experience of governing in the majority party the entire time and basically getting a lot done that I cared deeply about, but I feel really, really proud of all the stuff that this board has done in the last eight years. This has been an activist, proactive board. We have gotten a lot done. Ardrossan, Carfac, the stormwater fee, the OPEB funding, the pension funding changes, the PLO, finally deciding to make, take some action on the Willows. I mean, the list goes on and on of everything that we've done, and I'm really proud to have been part of this board, who, you know, sometimes had to work at each other to make it happen, but we made it all happen. And then finally, the residents, it has, my ward is the happy ward, and my residents are the engaged residents. You know, we have had, we have 99.999% of this township is active, engaged, smart, and really wants to be a part of the community, and it's easy to govern in a community like that, because you get great feedback. When you make your decisions, you know you're making the right ones, because you get great feedback from your residents, and that has been amazing. I will say this, it's been a little hard in the last couple of years to recruit people, and not because, to recruit people to get involved in this capacity, not because of the way we govern, not because of our staff, but because there's, these meetings have been difficult. And I want to say to anybody out there who has it in the back of their head that they would get involved, do it. Step forward. The more positive energy and positive force we have up there, the better, and it is gratifying. It's great to get to know your neighbors more, to work with this incredible staff, and to help make your community better. There's nothing more gratifying than that. So, I want to encourage all of, any and all of you that have it in the back of your head, especially the women, step up, run for office, be a part of this group, or just put yourself out there for a board or commission and get involved, because it really is a satisfying, great experience, and I feel really lucky to have had it myself. So, thanks again. Enjoy your book, everyone, and...
One of the commissioners have asked me if the public would like to come up and make comment about any one of the treasurer, or Commissioner Curley, or Commissioner Schaefer, if they'd like to do that at this time. Be more than happy to come forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Peroni, and I have had the real honor of working with John Osborne. We started our work together during a very tumultuous time, and it was wonderful, because John did not care about party. It was, we had a common goal, and it didn't matter who was a Democrat and who was a Republican, our goal was to take care of the community. So, I thank you for standing up and standing up during a very difficult time. You had very little support, and yet you did it. So, that is the real sign of courage, when you can stand up when there are a lot of people at your back, and so thank you for what you did for our community. Don, you are just an amazing man. I am grateful for your intellect and for your hard work and passion and what you've done, and I, it's been an honor. I know, you know, everybody doesn't agree on everything, but you always held yourself with such esteem, and I really appreciate the way you treat everyone. And lastly, to Ms. Elaine, you are a role model for all women, and my daughters, your daughter, and all the daughters and all the women need to take their hats off to you. As the first board president, you never stopped believing in democracy, and out of all the things you did, and there is a very long list, you could have taken the easy way out, because you were in a majority and you were in leadership, and you could have tried to shut down public conversation, because it did get nasty, and it was difficult, but you never did. You believed in democracy, you believed in the public participation, and I completely take my hat off to you and honor you. You did an amazing job, and I reiterate, women need to run, we need to get a board that is a little bit more, no offense to all the gentlemen up there, a little bit more representative of our population, because I think we have more than one-seventh of the people in our community might be women. So, let's get out there, women and minorities and everybody else, because I think we do a better democracy, but thank you. Thank you in particular. Of course, I have to thank you for the Willows as well, but you stood up and you have led a really high standard for every president to follow, that public participation, while it's messy and nasty sometimes, it is critical for good end products, so thank you.
Roberta Winters, in the season of gift-giving, the citizens of Radnor are grateful for the years of public service of Elaine Schaefer, Don Curley, and John Osborne. As models of elected officials, we hope you have inspired others to give the gift that keeps on giving, for each of you have learned and grown, and all of us have benefited from a future that is better because of you. May you inspire others to continue to engage civilly in civic participation that keeps and helps make democracy work. Thank you.
Dave Falcone, Milmar Road, Newtown Square. I don't get this opportunity a whole lot to come as a resident, but I'm happy to be here. So, quickly, I'd like to thank John. When I ran my first campaign for school board, John decided he would take me along and show me how to knock on doors, and that was a great experience. He dragged my daughter, she still talks about it to this day, John, knocking on doors. So, thank you for being willing to take somebody new along and show them the ropes. To Elaine and to Don, I've been thinking about coming tonight to thank you guys, and I'm going to thank you from two different perspectives. First, as a professional, as an attorney who has had the opportunity to practice in front of this board, in front of the two of you, to cut my teeth as a zoning attorney. There is no finer group to practice in front of, and I attribute a lot of that to the way you two operate business here. You've provided a forum for all of us attorneys to come that I think is fair and decent, and you've allowed us to present our case and me to present my case. As a young guy, and a slightly older young guy now, I am very grateful for having had the opportunity to practice in front of both of you, but that's the easy part. So, as a citizen, I am so tremendously grateful to live in this community with representatives like you, who represent not just what you believe, but what we all believe, and you've done it in different ways, as a Republican and as a Democrat, in a board, in an environment that can be very heated and can be very challenging. I think you've both handled yourself with tremendous grace and tremendous professionalism, because this is a hard job that you all do, and you answer to many critics, and there are very few people that understand exactly the time and commitment and dedication that you both give to every project and every person and every issue that comes before you. So, as a resident, as one of your residents, thank you so much for everything that you've done. I hope you don't go far. You've been a great model for everyone up here, and I hope they follow it. Thank you.
Lisa Borowski, Goshen Road. Public service is not easy. The accolades are few and far between, although you might not guess it by tonight, but it's very deserving. And for an elected official, a lot of times you're better remembered for the decisions that people didn't like than the ones that people liked. It is not for the faint of heart, for sure. So, Mr. Osborne, thank you very much as a resident, lifelong resident of the township. Thank you. Thirteen years of service here in Radnor, that is impressive, and we are grateful for your time. Don, I don't know if you remember, we met, first met, I think in 2013. We worked the polls over at Solpicio Gym together, and you and I had the chance to meet you. I mean, I'd heard of you and knew of your work, but I'd never had the chance to meet you, and I had a great time working with you that day. I think you and I had some discussions. I was seated on the school board at the time, and you were doing your work here for the board, and I think we had some great discussions, and I appreciated that. And then seeing you from then on, doing your job and doing what you do, I can tell how much you care about this community. You've given your heart and your soul, and I am grateful for that. My children are grateful for that, because you are, you've helped create a township that is one that we're all proud of, and you've left it a better place than, I think, than you found it.
Elaine, yeah, you've been amazing. You are definitely a role model. You have set the bar high, and I think I wrote it in an editorial, "Grace, class, dignified, thoughtful, caring, dedicated, and reasoned." Those are the qualities that you display when you sit up here, and those are the qualities you display when you're out and about with your constituents. We are lucky in the fourth ward to have had you as our public servant. You're a woman who doesn't take no for an answer, unfortunately for some of us. No. I am honored to follow you. I have some very, very big shoes to fill, and I will work very hard to maintain the level of decorum that you've set and the relationships that you've built in our ward, because they are important, and I do not want to mess anything up, because you've done a wonderful job. So, please don't change your phone number. I know where you live. I will be calling, and Don, I hope that you will allow me to call on you as well, because you gave me some great insights, some great advice, and I hope that I can call on you as well in the future. So, best of luck, and thank you both. And John, thank you all very, very much.
Sarah Armstrong, Radnor resident. Dad, Elaine, and Don, since I was very young, my mother always told me one thing, "Bloom where you are planted," and I'm grateful to all of you for blooming here in Radnor. We are better off, because you have served the community, and I am deeply, deeply grateful. And especially also to the staff, who's been so good to my father, I'm deeply appreciative. It was very difficult in the early years, but another thing my mother always taught me was to leave things better than you found them, and this administration is clearly an example, on behalf of the hard work of my father and the entire board, that you're all leaving the township better than it was when you got here, so I'm very grateful. Best of luck in all of your next activities. Thanks.
John Church, Radnor Township, first of all. John, thank you very much for your service. Semper Fidelis. Ronald Reagan once said, "Some people wonder their whole lives if they make a difference." Marines never have that problem. That applies to you, so thank you very much for your service to our corps and to our community. Elaine, I don't know if you remember this, one of the first times I met you, we had the entire college in front of the firehouse, and you came out to recognize the contributions of the college and the acceptance of women into the college. And I forgot to tell you that we were having a formation and that I was going to bellow out of command, and you were standing next to me, and I forgot to say something to you, and I said, "Attention!" And you jumped up in the air, and you came down very gracefully and very professionally, and I felt horrible, and I said something to the effect of, "I should have..." And I felt horrible, and I said something to the effect of, "I should have told you." She said, "That's all right." You said, "That's all right." And you were very cool about it, and I'll never forget that. So, it was a good lesson for me. So, thank you. But I tell you that because you don't understand, I don't think you can understand and appreciate the example you set for our women cadets. So, when they come to an event and they see me interacting with you, that puts a whole different perspective in their mind, and that's a very powerful thing, and I don't think you really understand how powerful that is, because the cadets will ask me, "Who was that woman that jumped up in the air like that?" And I have to explain to them who you are. Don, thank you very much, shipmate. We were talking about it. Ship, shipmate self. You epitomize that as a former naval officer, and I'm still upset with you, because the first time I met you, I tried to get a, a speed bump in front of my house, and you explained to me that it couldn't happen without the agreement of my neighbors. And I kept saying, "But it's front of my house, man, come on." And you said, "That's not how it works, Colonel. You got to get everybody on your block to agree. You got to go through a process." And we didn't get it, but I learned more about service and community and my neighbors than I ever had a right to, and you made that possible. It was very kind of you, and I'll never forget it. Thank you all for your service. Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Hello. So, Alex Yonopoulos Villanova. So, I know a lot of the times when I come up here, I'm coming up here with criticisms about something that's going on that I don't like. That just sort of is in my nature, that when I see something that I feel like is wrong, I want to shout at the top of my lungs, but then when I see something going good and I want to congratulate someone, the thumbs up often seems sufficient. And so, it can be a little lopsided, but I did want to take some time tonight to talk about the, some of the things that Commissioners Curley and Schaefer have done that I think have been good for the township, because I think even when you do generally disagree with someone, it's good to recognize areas where you think they have done really good things. So, Commissioner Curley, I wanted to say that from the first meeting that I attended as an adult, one of the things I noticed about you right away is that you were very, very diligent about process, and I don't think that's something that I heard anybody else say yet, but that you are very concerned about making sure not only that you do the right thing, but that things are done right, and that is very important. I also, and also in terms of your diligence, the numbers, I mean, the attention you pay to some of the numbers and some of the proposals I've seen, I actually, after the first couple meetings I attended, I thought, "Oh, he must be an accountant when he's not on the board." But, and I think that that's really good, that you've paid attention to that, because those small details can end up having big downsides later on if someone doesn't catch them at the time. And I also want to thank you for, for your commitment during the hearings to appoint a Ward Seven Commissioner. You were one of only two commissioners that asked multiple questions of every single candidate, and on behalf of Ward Seven, we appreciate your scrutiny of all of the candidates, myself included. Commissioner Schaefer, one thing I have to say about you is the, about the open space, that was, I think it's fair to say that that was maybe your signature issue when you ran, and you delivered on that. You know, some people might disagree about the particulars of it, but I don't think there's anybody who can say that you did not deliver the open space you promised, and, you know, unfortunately, politicians don't always deliver on their promises, so I think that you do deserve recognition for that. You've also, I think, been very even-handed in your position as the chairperson. I think that, I mean, I know that sometimes these things can get really heated, but I've seen you, I saw you keep a calm composure in the middle of two commissioners literally seated next to you yelling at each other at, like, the top of their voices, and I, I don't know if I could do that, but I, I found that pretty impressive. And the last thing I wanted to say is, at the last meeting, I, I asked about your ethics hearing, and you said that you were going to continue to fight it, and when I watched the, the tape of that back, the response I gave sounded a little bit sarcastic to me, but I want to say that I really did mean that genuinely, because I can think of a couple of commissioners we've had in the past, off the top of my head, that would not have bothered to stay and fight an ethics charge once they left office, and I think that that shows a level of commitment that we don't always see in our politicians. So, regardless of any of the disagreements we've had, I want to commend you both on those things and hope that you continue to take your diligence and your level of commitment with you in whatever you continue to do in the rest of your careers.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. I'll just limit my remarks tonight to, to the outgoing treasure, my, my feelings about Elaine, Paul Schaefer's positions and involvement in township issues, I think is fairly well-known at this point, as is my feelings about Mr. Curley, and it would be, I think, largely a repetition of what young Mr. Yonopoulos just put out, which is the commitment to the due diligence and the research and reaching evidence-based decisions as opposed to the very easy and the understandable, but nevertheless problematic, ends justify the means approach. Like to talk just briefly about Mr. Osborne, because during his tenure here, he has been, in my opinion, somebody who needed to be listened to a lot more and a lot more closely. The name wasn't brought up specifically tonight, but the prior township manager, Dave Bayshore, I think in large part was able to operate for as long as he did because there wasn't enough people listening to John Osborne. One of the better moments, I thought, in Radnor Township was when we went through that termination hearing, and you saw people speaking out in a bipartisan way with evidence as to all the problems that this township is going through, and two of the people who come most readily to mind are John Osborne and the woman who spoke earlier tonight, Christina Peroni. Same is also true when it came to Bill Spingler and how John Osborne, again, understood exactly who Bill Spingler was and the problem that he represented, and I think, again, had we listened to somebody who had that level of insight, we probably would have dealt with a lot of the problems that Bill Spingler presented far more expeditiously, and I think there's something to be learned from that. And I hope that Mr. Osborne's successor continues to have that same level of not only due diligence, but proactiveness in terms of looking into township problems and taking their position seriously. It's quite a legacy that you've left in this township, Mr. Osborne, and speaking on behalf of myself and I think at least several other members of the Sherry household, and by that I mean all the members of the Sherry household, we really do thank you for being somebody who not only took himself seriously, took his position seriously, took the voters around the township seriously, and if it's any small blessing, we'll listen more thoroughly, whatever endeavor you take in the future, sir.
My name's Roy Perry. It's occurred to me more than once over the years that one of the drawbacks of public service is you tend to hear from people when they are unhappy, and I'm glad tonight has been the opposite, that members of the staff, the outstanding staff that we have, and members of the board have heard themselves complimented and praised. Very deserving. I think we live in a town where people who never come to a meeting, never call, never write, never visit the township building, all know in their own way how well-served we've been by the staff and the board overseeing a great place to live. So, change is normal, but Elaine, you and I go back a long way, and this change is abrupt. This is a big day. I think it'll be 20 years before people totally understand what you've accomplished. Maybe long after your name is forgotten, people will still be enjoying what you did for the township, which not many can say. I know all the negative words that come your way will be forgotten within seconds in terms of comparing what you did. And Don, great work. Thank you for everything you did for us. John, same thing to you. For all the people that never show up and never say anything, thank you.
All right. I think we can move on in this meeting. Thank you for all the kind words, and keep those kind words, keep them coming to the next board to counteract some of the nasty words. It's nice. The next thing on our agenda is public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a topic other than outgoing goodbyes.
Thank you. It's Christina Peroni again. I'm coming to tonight as, as representative of The Willow's Park Preserve with a just quick update on what's going on. We had a meeting, and we fortunately got a copy of some issues that Solser Rice and Bob Zinkowski put together of outstanding items that we needed to work on, which we believe we've addressed at least in part and given a draft back to them, and we're going to go back and forth. We understand that we must work out the details. We understand that this document is really important, and we've heard that repeatedly, and we will continue to work on it. Our hope is that we can get it on the agenda for the January 8th meeting, and that's what I understand from Bob and John, that we're going to try and do that and get together, and we want to work it out together. I mean, our goal is to work together as a team, and if we all put our, our focus on January 8th, I think we can get it done. So, if that meets with the board approval to have it on the agenda, that would be, that would be terrific.
And I can tell you from my perspective, I hope so.
Okay. Great. Thank you again. Thank you for all your leadership, and we're going to make you proud. It's going to be a wonderful place, and, and it'll be part of the legacy in this township that will be loved forever, so we will work hard.
I have no doubt, and thank you for all the work that you're all putting into this, and will continue. This is going to be a labor of love for quite a long time, and it's been my honor to work with you and to help move it along, and I hope it's got its legs now, and we're pushing
My name's Joseph Reiser, living in Inverry, and I would like to add just a few comments on this, I think, very elusive but yet almost tangible project that we call The Willow's. I've been associated with it for, for some time, so I feel I can talk somewhat credibly about that. But for me, this project was a great example when we find a topic where residents and it's, and the government leaders can agree on a common topic and work together toward a, toward success. I think it's been a, a very impressive project so far. I think it's been exemplary in many ways. It's been very difficult, it's been challenging, but I think we have, I believe, exceeded expectations. That's my, my personal view. And I think there were three major reasons why that occurred. I think the first reason is that residents finally stood up and took seriously to the, the concept of public land for public use and, and took a position on this and, and let their voices be heard. I think that was, to me, very reassuring, rather than making secondary comments about all the initiatives this board has taken unsuccessfully over the years. It just didn't, to me, that was counterproductive. And I think to, and, and the, the related point is that the, there was an impetus to come up with a better solution, and this is where The Willow's Park Trust was formed in that, in that environment, in that context. The second major point of why we've gotten to this point is related to the leadership of this board. I think it was a very timely response by this board to provide leadership on this topic. You listened to residents, and it was, it was evident, and it was a reassuring, and I wasn't so sure we would, we would get there, but we certainly got there, and I think it, it created a groundswell of optimism and harder work to, to work, to, to reach a common goal. You then also hired consultants and spent some money to prove that you were serious, and that allowed us to see the, what is possible as a plan. The third reason of why we got there, I like to say, is really largely a credit to Willow's Park Preserve Core Group. I've seen this group work, and it's easy to comment on this group as being very passionate and very noisy, but I think what perhaps is less understood, how professional and how accomplished this group is, and this is why I think it's been largely the other side of the success that we've realized. We have professional, high-level expertise in constructing of buildings, of, of, of event planning, of running a nonprofit, and having corporate and fundraising experience in a relatively small core group, which is now expanding. I really think that had a lot to do with our credibility, or I like to say, our evolving credibility, and importantly, I think it opened the opportunity for a serious investor to step forward and in part state via this person's commitment that I think there's a credible effort going on here. Now, some people might say we got lucky. I like to say we were prepared for luck, and I think, to me, those are three points that really made a difference. Now, the key issue is now, how do we finish this project, and how do we go from here? And what are the key points? And to me, there are very quickly three or four points that are very important. Top of my list is maintaining momentum. What I mean by maintaining momentum is get the agreement completed by end of this month, put the plans in place by Q1 slash Q2, and start construction middle of the year. If we can achieve anything close to this, I would say it's a terrific expression of ma, of maintaining momentum, and a lot of people are probably count, accounting for this. I can't tell you how, since we started this project in our community, and you know, Inverry has been a bit vocal, how many ongoing questions I get about what's happening, and also really sincere comments about the progress that was made with the board, and I do want to communicate that here. The second point is, we need to establish a clear and, and, and strong partnership with Radnor staff on this project. We understand it's the responsibility of Radnor staff, but I think it would be a shame if we can't see eye to eye, if we don't see, we are on the same page, and importantly, we need to manage expectations. I've seen several examples where that has been a risk to the project and to the process, and I think we should, we need to avoid that. In parallel, as a third point, I think Willow's Park Preserve must continue to evolve and mature, and I think that is manifest in demonstrating we are a credible nonprofit organization, that we have a good plan, we have a good structure, and that we can communicate effectively the vision of The Willow's, which is really a holistic vision, and I hope we don't lose that concept. And fourthly, we continually need the support of the Board of Commissioners. I hope that momentum continues in this group and also the new commissioners, and, and I, I'm, I do hope you force us to be responsible. You need to, you know, reports every two months or whatever it might take, we have to live up to our, to our part in, in this, in this partnership. I think, in summary, we have set, I think, at this juncture, high expectations, and I truly think it is very important that we deliver on this project, and if we do, I think that the value proposition of, of, of Inver, of, of The Willow's, in, in my mind, could certainly rival what we've seen at Santa Clara and, and other areas, and that would be just a phenomenal outcome. And I think to that end, there are a lot of committed individuals who will work with the Board of Commissioners, with the Radnor management team towards success in, in 2018, and I hope we all realize that outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reiser.
Hello again, Alex Yonopoulos Villanova. So, I wanted to talk about So I wanted to talk about the Mainline Media News article that came out recently. The particular quote that I want to talk about is the following. It says, "Nagel added that Farhi had volunteered for the position and was the only Democrat among those who offered to serve in the position." So I have two issues with this, the first of which is that that's not correct, the second of which is that I don't think that party registration should be considered a person's most important quality. And I don't think that Mr. Farhi's Democratic Party registration is his best quality, even though I'm a Democrat. I think the best thing that I've seen from him so far was the fact that he showed up at the last meeting with very specific ideas about things that would help out Ward Seven. And that would be the kind of thing I'd like to hear from a commissioner that's commenting on why they're voting to put a particular person on this board in the future if there is another vacancy board in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Well, John Nagel's taking a little stroll off the dais. I was going to ask him why he pushed out that contention to the press that there was only one Democrat that was apparently seeking the interim position, because that's clearly not true. Young Mr. Yanopoulos was here at a meeting. He was at this lecturn. He had submitted his name. So why was that put out by John Nagel, who now conveniently has decided to strut off the dais? When I read that, in that article, which was about Mr. Farhi's posting of a semi-automatic handgun, hollow-point ammunition, and two magazines with associated commentary about a drop piece, I was surprised as to why John Nagel would do that. And I had wanted to ask John Nagel, and I can't now because he's left the dais, his motivation behind that. Because to make a statement like that, well, Mr. Farhi is the only Democrat who applied, it almost makes it sound like John Nagel was saying that his hands were tied, that he had to be purely partisan, you know, the type of pure partisanship that we heard about a year and a half ago from Jim Higgins about to the victor belong the spoils of the enemy. And I don't think that reflects well on Mr. Farhi. I would have thought that Mr. Farhi would have been, or would rather have preferred to be presented in a way that he was the best candidate as opposed to, well, he's the only Democrat who put his name in the proverbial ring, despite the falsity of that claim. But seeing as how John Nagel, it appears, is not going to retake the dais anytime soon, I'll talk a little bit more about the post. Up here comes John Nagel. So I'll just pause while he retakes his seat. No, 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 no. There was no clock comment tonight. And the first speaker certainly spoke for more than five minutes. So, Mr. Nagel, why did you tell the press that Mr. Farhi was the only Democrat who sought to become interim commissioner in the Seventh Ward? Is there something very interesting on your iPad?
Mr. Sherry, can you make your public comments?
I'm directing my public comments to John Nagel. John Nagel, as Mr. Yanopoulos pointed out, made a false statement to the press. Okay? Part of, Ms. Shafer, you may know this, even though you are leaving, but the first word that appears on the Democratic Party's masthead in Radnor is accountability. You remember that. I'm sure you remember that. So when we make that type of comment to the press, well, strike that. Ms. Shafer, I'll direct it to you. Was Mr. Farhi the only Democrat who put his name in the hat for interim Seventh Ward Commissioner? Don't want to answer that? It's clearly untrue. So now I'm asking John Nagel, why'd you say that? Why'd you say that to the press? But Mr. Nagel prefers to play with the iPad. This is not the type of behavior that one would hope, that especially new members of the board would aspire to. And Mr. Farhi, while you may not have picked the spot that you're seated up on the dais, I would urge you, if you want to have the respect of the community, to not take the approach of John Nagel. If you make a statement that's false in the community, own it. Come into a meeting and say, you know what? I made a misrepresentation. I'm sorry. Here's why I said it. And I'd like to correct it. Pretending it doesn't happen only makes the problem more pronounced. Believe me when I tell you that. I don't know why, Mr. Farhi, you put that photo up and that commentary, and I'm not sure why you took it down. I do know this, though. While we're on the topic of due diligence, because I brought that up when I was talking about the treasurer, I do know, Mr. Farhi, that you had precious few platforms when your name was first nominated. In fact, the only one that really comes to mind was the Seventh Ward having a more robust social media experience. And when I was at the Board of Commissioners meeting, when you were actually voted in with Tom Lowey of the vacancy board casting the tie-breaking vote, a member of the audience who I'd never met before said, have you seen his public Facebook page? No. And I kind of forgot about it. And the next day I looked at it, and he only had about eight posts that were public. Right there's the photo of the Beretta and the hollow points and the magazines and the drop piece, which, as others have pointed out, means a weapon that's used for murder. And from what it sounds like to the press is that Jim Higgins wasn't aware of it and John Nagel wasn't at all bothered by it. And I have to tell you, the latter wasn't surprising, given John Nagel's public somebody-shoot-you-out burst. Doesn't surprise me that your post didn't remove his proverbial needle. I would tell you, though, again, going forward, to be mindful of things like that and the way that you hold yourself out to the public and seek again to try to distinguish yourselves from people up on this board whose commitment to, as we saw just a couple of minutes ago, accountability or conducting themselves with a modicum of civility is at least highly arguable. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Good evening, Tony.
Good evening, Board. I would just like to say a few things. I have been coming to these board meetings for many years now. The disrespect, the vitriol that spews from this dais, I find offensive and it needs to stop. We need to respect our residents as well as our residents respecting our commissioners. But it's a two-way street, and I have not seen a lot of that in the past eight years. It's been a long, and it's been a long, hard journey. This needs to cease and desist immediately. I am hoping that with the new board, that you will reach across the table or the aisle, whatever you want to call it, and act like adults. I don't care if you're Democrat or Republican. You all need to work together for the best interest of this township and for your residents that you represent, that you put your hand on the Bible and swore that you were going to represent them, do the very best that you can do. To interim-elect Farhi, welcome. My parting comment to you last Board of Commissioner meeting was to do your due diligence. There's a lot that I don't understand quite yet about the amendment to this PLO. But thank you. I hope, though, that this isn't a sign for you specifically to look at other ways or means to maybe redo some of our zoning. In very particular ways, our zoning has been gutted. It should not exist. It should not continue. I think that many residents, particularly during the CICD, came out and expressed their concerns. Last week, what I heard concerning the amendment to this is that we were, don't worry, we're going to go through land development and a whole bunch of other processes. This is exactly the language that I heard as I sat in the audience when we were going through the CICD. And I hope that in this particular process, that there is a discussion, not only collaborative with the commissioners, but also with the residents. So as the year ends, I would like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and a Happy New Year. Finally, to Mr. Osborne, I don't know who I'm going to collaborate with in terms of the Villanova girls' basketball team. When you're available, I have posters for you. And thank you for the lively discussions that we have, including members of the team past and their father being an ex-FBI agent. So thank you again and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Sarah.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue, Rosemont, PA. As a Garrett Hillian in Ward Seven, I've been coming to these meetings for 19 years. And so if you think I'm a curmudgeon tonight, I'm going to be a curmudgeon. The social media slamming principally by two men who do not live in Ward Seven has been unconscionable. It is not your right to tell Ward Seven what they want and how they're going to treat their new commissioner, whether he's our commissioner until May or he becomes our commissioner. That's all I'm going to say. It has to stop. What someone did four years ago on Facebook is no reason to judge them. I just want to say that. It has been disgraceful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment? Mr. Sherry, you've already been up once.
Yes, but something came up in the audience which needs to be brought.
Please, Mr. Sherry.
It's important because of us. When I went back to sit down, there was a young man who's seated right there with a young female next to him and a slightly older gentleman.
That's my family, Mr. Sherry. Please tread carefully.
My comments are always made carefully, Ms. Shafer. Okay? Your son, then, if that's who it is, I didn't recognize my face, turned around and started saying to me, among other things, "Exit's right there." That's what he did. And now you're nodding. Maybe you approve of that. Maybe that's the type of, now you're smiling at it, okay? I could tell you, you might be upset by that, Commissioner Shafer. That might be embarrassing, okay? That's something that you need to take care of in terms of your own family, okay? Not threaten me with tread lightly. That's the reason I came back up to this lecturn. I didn't even recognize your son. But that's the type of environment that we can breathe in this township when we don't see the type of respect back and forth, as Ms. Bailey talked about tonight. Last thing I will say, just because Ms. Pilling brought it up, was the assertion that two people in the township are telling the Seventh Ward how to vote or how to feel about their interim representative. I would just like to state that I have not and will not tell the Seventh Ward where I don't live how to feel about anything. However, something comes into the public sphere that I feel needs to be talked about, I'm going to talk about it. And I would expect Ms. Pilling and any other interested citizen to do the exact same thing. And so, Ms. Shafer, I bid you a fond farewell. I would, however, recommend that perhaps you tell your son it is not appropriate to talk to members of the--
Is there any other public comment?
--to talk to members of the public that--
Mr. Sherry, sit down, please, now.
We're going to go ahead and continue on with our meeting now.
Mr. Sherry, sit down, please, now.
You don't have a right to get up here and attack our president personally.
Your time's up, Mr. Sherry.
Would you please sit down?
I'm up here because--
You're way overboard on your comments.
--because somebody who happened to be related to the president--
It's irrelevant. Sit down, please.
I'm going to go ahead and ask that--
It's irrelevant.
--the mic is turned off and we're going to go proceed with our meeting.
Just because you're unhappy doesn't make--
Is the committee report.
That's a disgrace.
The first committee is Personnel and Administration. We do not have a report from that committee. Next is Parks and Recreation. John, do we have anything from Parks and Rec?
No report.
Finances and Audit, we do not have a report. Community Development, John? Public Works and Engineering?
No report.
Library, no report. Public Safety, no report. Public Health, John?
You folks may have seen that the Board of Health has prepared a draft chicken ordinance, for want of a better name, that would cover people who wanted to have chickens in the township. I would like to recommend that we send that to the Planning Commission and allow them to look at it and hold public hearings on it.
Duly noted, Commissioner Nagel. Next, we have Old Business and New Business. Is there anyone on the board who would like to bring forward any old or new business?
I-- Well, yeah. So all I wanted to do was move the deadline up from 8:00 to 9:30. So if there's a consensus among the board to have the staff prepare that, so the chief knows what we're talking about, correct, chief?
Yeah.
And we just, the logic of this is there are a lot of us that spend time in downtown and it's empty and we still pay $25 for a cup of coffee when we forget to put a quarter in the meter. So this was just the idea is that we don't need the meters operating that early, so--
Yeah, so--
We're not trading it for later on in the evening. It's just a give-back until 9:30 and you guys can prepare legislation for the next board.
I support that.
Yeah. I would also say to look at, like, Wayne Presbyterian, because during drop-off, it was always an issue. So talk to them about what their time is when their drop-off is, because it was always rushing in, they can, parents can say goodbye to their kids.
So I guess if the board is comfortable with the concept, we'll just leave it for your board and your leadership to initiate that in 2018. I think it's a good idea. It's an idea that we vetted. We vetted it in a subcommittee. The subcommittee approved it, so I think it would be good to proceed.
Any other old or new business?
I have a matter of new business. I have a statement I'd like to read. I regret to announce that I am retiring or resigning from the Board of Commissioners effective with tonight's meeting. I have found that serious family health issues at home are preventing me from devoting the necessary time to the work of an elected commissioner and fully representing the people of the First Ward and the rest of our township. With my retirement, I will have served two years of a four-year term. I want to thank all the people I represent, and particularly those that elected me to my first term in November 2011 and my current term of November 2015. I have tried my best to represent all residents and businesses fairly and fully. I hope I have succeeded. The six years I have served are added to the two terms I served from 1984 to 1992. Now, looking back for a minute, if you can indulge me for this, since starting my first term in January 2012, I am proud to have been part of the Boards of Commissioners that accomplished the following, and I mentioned this earlier about Elaine's work, purchase of the 71 acres of Ardrossan Farm in the southwest portion of the township, thus preserving in perpetuity some of the most beautiful pastures, streams, and woods in Delaware County, putting Radnor Township in a very strong financial position overall, with seven straight years of budget surpluses behind us, being rated AA1 by Moody's Investors Service, and allowing no property tax increase in five of the last six years, substantially cutting into the township's significant future obligations to meet pension, healthcare, and life insurance obligations to our employees by setting aside large sums of money each year until we reach the required contributions. Following strict development rules in improving the Villanova University project for new dormitories, a performing arts center, a parking garage, and retail shops along Lancaster Avenue, thus allowing Villanova to attract top students and faculty and continue to positively impact the economies of Radnor and Delaware County. Passage of a stormwater fee to allow the township to have funds to better protect people and property from the dangers of uncontrolled flooding. Because it is a fee and not a tax, our universities, houses of worship, and nonprofit, other nonprofit organizations will now help the rest of us financially in controlling flooding. And finally, there are others, but I'm just going to mention one more, designing an entire network of trails to enable any person to walk, jog, or cycle from the center of Wayne safely, safely throughout the township. I want to thank all my fellow commissioners for their support over the last six years. I also want to thank and recognize the Township Manager, Bob Zinkowski, and our Solicitor, John Rice, and all of Bob's managers and all their employees of civil service and police. John Rice, and all of Bob's managers and all their employees of civil service and police who go out of their way to ensure that township government is, is run efficiently, openly, fairly, and fully. Thank you.
Well, Jim, I'm, I think we're all on this board and in the township. Sorry to see you go off the board. And for me personally, it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. And I, this is a sad day, but completely understandable for your personal situation. I'd like to make a motion to formally accept the resignation of Commissioner Higgins.
So, a second.
Yeah, I just want to echo Jim. Certainly, certainly my, you know, my thoughts are with you on this. And if I can be supportive, if I can help, let me know. But obviously, we're with you in this. I'm sure it's a difficult situation for you all together, so good luck with it.
Yeah, Jim, I, I definitely understand, but, you know, my two years on this board, I've sat next to you and, and, and I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed working with you. We'll always have stormwater and sidewalks. You, you and I were always there on that one, on those two, I should say. And you are definitely a hard-working commissioner who's an advocate for his ward. So I, I've appreciated seeing that, learning from that. So if I can be of any help, please let me know.
All right. Is there any other comment from the board or from the public?
Good evening. Jane Gally from Seventh Ward, Barclayton Road. I would like to say to Jim, I am sorry that you are going off the board for the wrong reasons. From election is a better reason, if one way or the other, but, and may your family, you know, find their way to some peace and solace with, with what's going on. Also, I mean, we haven't always agreed on stuff, but, you know, it's always been a good discourse. And from my point of view, I appreciate it. And I just have one real quick one. And to Sean, I, we, we were on opposite sides. It doesn't matter. And having, bringing up stuff from the past that has absolutely nothing to do with what's going on here is appalling to me, and I'm very sorry that that came up. And I will absolutely publicly say, I, anytime you need help or anything that you need from me, I would be glad to stand up with you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
I mean, what I told you, we're all in this together. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jane.
All right. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. And that passes five to nothing with Jim abstaining. And that creates a vacancy on this board with that motion. So we now have another vacancy. And since we just went through this process, I think you're all remember very fondly what the process is. At this point, if you live in the First Ward and you are a voter in the first year and have lived there for a year, you are eligible to put your name in to serve on, on an interim basis, basis until the next election, which is in May. So if you are interested in serving, please send your, an indication to our manager, Bob Zinkowski, with your resume, and we will interview you in public, as we did with the Seventh Ward vacancy. And in January, a new representative will be chosen, and then there will be an election in May.
So John Rice, the vacancy board itself is reconstituted every year. So, so it has to be, the vacancy board has to be reconstituted in January before, yes, at the rework.
It's, it's an appointment.
Yes.
In January.
Right.
It's on your reorganization meeting agenda.
Okay, thank you.
It's an annual appointment.
Okay. Is there any public participation? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.